Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Rockingham School Board meeting.
Okay, and it is 5:30, so let's call the meeting to order at 5:30. Bill, would you lead us in the pledge?
Uh, gladly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. The free, public, and righteous hands. One nation, united, sovereign, with liberty and justice for all. Not at all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Okay. Bill, do you have an adjustment?
Um, yes, and can you give me a hint? Because I'm blanking and we only talked about this two hours ago. I'm sorry.
You were asked about bringing up the, um, getting information on the Zoom.
Yes, Priscilla, I don't know if you received the CC, but I sent a message with that, um, clipping to Rick and I CC Andy.
Okay, let's, let's put Zoom on the, um, agenda as in business.
Okay.
We can talk about it at that point. And see what the board, if the board needs to do anything or not do anything better.
All right.
Okay, so open on is the, anybody else have any adjustments? Yeah, I think everything else can be covered under the things that are on here. So communications and public comment.
I'm seeing any.
Not seeing any. Um, review and approve four minutes of July 17th. We're also missing August 1st, but we'll need to do those, I guess, next time.
Oh, who would the, uh, July 17th minutes?
Okay, are there any corrections?
If I may, um, under my capital improvements maintenance schedule, it was pointed out that Carrie had mentioned about the testing being done in, uh, at Central Elementary School and I've had a note in the previous email that was not the case. Uh, that was not something I stated. What I did state was that-
Rick, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yep, that's okay.
Um, are the minutes okay the way the minutes are? And then we'll address the correction.
Sure, if you want to go back.
That's what happened at that meeting. So is that-
Well, that's not what I stated. That's what I'm getting at.
You stated differently at the meeting?
I did not state that at all. All I stated was that the PCB testing was several months out.
And that was at the meeting under ultimate own business? So you didn't share, you shared the capital improvement and maintenance schedule?
Yeah.
Still got any-
Yes, well, all that is correct.
Testing results. Um, it says should be back for, in a few weeks. So what you're saying is you shared that this PCB testing results, uh, the PCB testing was taking place a few months out?
Right, what I shared was they did initial walkthrough in each building and the actual testing is several months out.
Okay, so the PCB, um, testing was started with a walkthrough, but the actual testing will be several months out?
It was initial walkthrough, which is, which is the way they had planned on doing it. There was initial walkthrough of all the buildings, tech, testing is at least a couple of months out of this.
Okay. So I'm going to change that to the PCB testing. It started with an initial walkthrough and the actual testing will be several months out?
Yes.
And that's what you stated at that meeting?
Right, there was no testing done, to be clear. There was just a walkthrough.
And to actual testing will be-
Correct.
Several months out.
Correct.
I wasn't understanding if that's exactly what you stated. I thought we needed to correct it this time, but if that's what you actually stated, we need to correct it.
Yes, that is what I stated, yep.
Good, thank you.
Priscilla, Carrie misstated the facts. She said the testing had been done in her school and it hadn't been. Only the initial walkthrough had been done. Rick didn't even talk about it. So Rick, we're just correcting that because the testing hasn't been done at any of the Rockingham schools. Carrie misstated the facts. It's just a mistake on her part.
Right, which would be corrected at tonight's meeting, but we can correct it here. It's not a problem, I don't think. Um, we just wanted to be, to be careful that we're not misleading the public and so that they're aware of it. Thank you, Chris, for weighing in on that. Appreciate that. Okay. We'll take care of that. So with those, those corrections, um, are we okay with the minutes? Anything else? Chris, do you see anything else?
No, good.
All right, so we'll, um, we'll accept the minutes with, um, corrections and take out, um, Rick's statement on PCB testing and, uh, that was in there and fix that. Okay? All right. Um, reports, uh, we didn't vote on them, but we will accept them as they are corrected. We don't actually have to vote on them, so I'll go to do a motion, so. All right, is everybody in agreement? Can I see a thumbs up from you? Chris, if those are okay with the corrections? And everybody's here that way. And I kind of hold each one of you with the actual person. All right, finance report? Yeah, all right.
Thank you. Um, so in one sense have you, I just wanted to kind of true up the balance for the end of '22, which was a long time ago, but we relate with the audit this, this year. Um, so if you would turn to page 16, which is statement C, and you'll see an assign. Okay. Um, there's an assign, uh, which is over on the left-hand side down below and it says assigned is, uh, And above that, you'll see a committed, which actually is 21. And, and on right in here, and 21 is 2,015,156. Now, um, I want to give you to go along with this is the scheduled C for 21. So, so it just goes, um, that really everything is, is then true down, even though it was a long haul to get there. Thank you. Uh, and essentially, um, the, the auditors have, have come up with final balances. And on this sheet here that I've done, this shows how you have assigned your balances and, and how that ties into the audit here. 4,195,091. And how you, with a sign, uh, to offset taxes and what, how much went to, uh, capital reserve or improvements. So, so this ties right out to what your past audits were. Now, um, also in this, I, also in this paper, I've got this year's for, for '23. This is unaudited. This is what I've come up with so far. And if you've-
What page are you on, maybe?
Well, that could fit into the smaller packet. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't number the page, but it's kind of, it says on top fiscal year '23, the projected unreserved fund balances.
Thank you.
Yep. Everybody find it okay? Uh huh. Um, so you'll see for Rockingham. Okay, and no surprise here, we were projecting a 40,419 deficit. And with the substitutes that were transferred from the SU over to the Rockingham accounts, we now have a deficit of 80,724. Is it concerning? No, no. And again, you, you have to look at the big picture here. Um, and that is, Jim, the big picture, 150,000 intuitions that you didn't budget for. We've got that in. Again, there were some changes in personnel at the middle school, which again created costs. And, um, there were some other areas that were, were, uh, misbudgeted. So, now-
What about surplus? Those surpluses around there and chances are they have a surplus too, which were offset. If you're doing substitutes back to us-
That's right.
You have to give surplus back to us as well.
Now, if you turn that page-
But that's for the previous year.
If you turn that page for '22, and that is your SU reserve, SU surplus that is going to be returned back to you. So, Rockingham is going to receive that 815,847.41.
But that's from 2022. Won't there be a-
Yes, but you don't have that yet.
No, but we don't have to, we don't have this charge for the substitute yet either because it's in the SU, but the-
Uh, no, not anymore.
That's finished. We haven't been given it's all.
That's finished, so the surplus for this year should be finished too, so we should, that wouldn't that apply in the same place?
Well, so what's going to happen is your operation, your, your, your operation was a deficit of the 80, 80,724 for your Rockingham operations.
Without the surplus from the SU.
Without the surplus, would be in from the SU.
For '23.
Oh, well, for '22. Cause you're going to get '22 surplus back.
We're going to understand that.
Okay, so it's going to give you 815,000. Um, and again, your operation for '23 was a, a deficit of 80,000. Now, your, your SU, SU 423, and I'm looking at this page. Here, uh, on the top, Windham Northeast, your, your balance so far, and this is unaudited balance, is a 282,260. That's, that's what your, your-
That's actually, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the SU looks like. It's positive. It's no 800,000, but, but it's positive.
There's something to do to take our share of that.
Yes.
Priscilla, 2023 to 2023.
Right.
It's about 127,000 dollars.
Right, which is more than 80,000.
Which is more than 80,000, yep. So, yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
Good way to look at it.
Keeping it year to year.
Yep. Yep, so anyways, uh, it's, it's, it's not bad, but until we get, you know, the audit, audit will start next Monday. And, uh, we'll see where we go. This is the audit for FY '23. Yes. I just want to point that out that we're well ahead of where we have been for the last few years, so. It's coming in a very inoperative time for us, but, um, you know, once we get cleaned up to, these will really start to flow as they should. You know, where you're getting that, you want your audit received, so if there's corrections that you have to make, you can make them. You know, if there's modifications in your procedures, you want to be able to make those corrections and modifications and get it done, get up the snuff. So, I, I think you can be okay.
You can be, uh, when you look at that first page and it shows the history since 2017, we've had, we've had additions to, we've had contributions to reserve in each of those years, uh, including 2012.
Yes.
And I, I didn't do the math very quickly, but it looks to me like it's a good million and a half, uh, or so total.
Yes.
Reserve. Do you know if we, if we made any charges to that reserve?
I, I don't know of any charges that were made. It appears, it appears that you've got 1,865 plus if you contribute more towards it with them, with the, some of the surplus monies that you're going to receive.
Right. It was some, so it's like 298.
Yes, I think the majority of offsets we put towards taxes. And so to my knowledge, since I've been in control, we have not gone into looking at tapping at capital reserves or anything.
I'm not aware of these.
Yeah, so.
But I'm only a guy.
But I just, as far as I know, for the last two years, we haven't gone into it, so.
And Rick may have his-
It's probably starting. We haven't done anything.
Yeah, so.
And before, then we'll be for that. Um, cause Rick had reported to us at one point, um, exactly, and I had it written down, so I'm going to find it. The, the 620,000 may not include the one, all ones that are on here, the, the 40,652, which is why I wanted to have a different ones before that. But I'm also not sure when 100,000 got put in, which would make that figure higher. And then we put in during 19,156 the year before and we put 929,935 of those over this year. So it all went up to quite a lot in there, yes.
Now, I, I went back to the actual voting warrants to pull some of these off, but it ties into, so I think the audit amounts as well, so. But if anybody finds anything questionable, please, we'll look at it and adjust from there.
I will, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think it may be fine, but I'll look more for you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Priscilla. This, this details it out in degrees, which I saw in the comments as well.
And any other questions? I mean, listen, I could spend a half an hour going through the audit itself because there's a lot of good information in there. If you look at how, um, they break out the two pieces, you know, the, the fund accounting and, and the government why, um, it just is, is a good report and it, it is valuable, even though I, I realize it's overwhelming for a lot of people. But, but there's a lot of good information in there.
Any questions for Jim?
And if you, if you think of some later on that you want to email me, please, I'd be happy to, to answer them later on.
Thank you so much for all you've done.
Right.
It's so much better understanding and you detail it out and talk to us, so we do appreciate it.
Good.
Yeah. And if there are no other questions, if this is on finance, um, the principal's reports. Do you have-
Carrie, Carrie is here on, on, on Zoom and then, um, I was able to pull up, I have Henry's and Laura's and I can, I can both read them briefly if you'd like.
Right, that would be wonderful. Thank you, Andy. Okay, Carrie, you're up.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So we're looking at projected enrollments. We just lost a student who had moved. We had heard they were potentially moving. We officially got the enrollment from the other school. So we were down to 138 students, but we also have some incoming potential move in. So the breakdown is K is potentially at 30 students right now. First grade is also 30, second grade is 29, third grade is 17, and that's just the one cohort this year. And then fourth grade is 32. All of the grades would have two of each grade except for that third grade has that one. So, and then just to update you, so we are officially have hired the two full new second grade teachers. So we warmly welcome Meredith Harvey and Paige Congdon to Central School. They've been in getting their classrooms ready. We're very excited and they're very eager to start. I just want to do a big shout out to Heather Murphy Hicks and all of the after-school programming people and everybody else who's working the summer program. So Heather Murphy Hicks, Tammy Chapin, Anne Hadley, Nurse Jen Burke, Laura Rounds, Murphy Hicks, Heather's daughter, and then Jay Palmizano all worked the summer really hard at the summer camp that we had shared at W, Westminster School. And we appreciate their work with Kim Budzik, who was their coordinator there. Um, and the students seemed to have a great time. I went with them on a field trip recently and everybody was having a fun time. And they were also doing schoolwork, which was lovely too. So they had the morning of academics and then the afternoon of some free to play time and things, so. That was wonderful. I do want to clarify, I'm not sure I missed, sorry, earlier whether, um, Rick had mentioned anything. So we had asked about the PCB testing in the last time, so we had had the PCB folks into our school. They came in, but because of the Canadian wildfires, they were not able to actually do all of the testing. So CES has not had its PCB testing finished yet. So we will wait updates for when they come back and then we'll get the updates on how the testing has come. And so for families, just so you know, the class lists are being finalized and families should be soon notified of their teachers for next year. Um, I have a few save the dates. So August 27th is the Back to School Carnival with Park's Place. It's a Sunday. The carnival will be between the whole street. We block off School Street Extension, if you're not familiar with that. Um, hopefully we'll have the fire department again this year. They do the release of the water with the fire, with the fire hydrant. Uh, but we do work closely with Park's Place and have a carnival going on. And so different representatives from, uh, the Rotary and the Library and other places come. It's a fun time from 1:00 to 3:00. So we hopefully will have, see you there. We may have a dunk tank. Well, details about that later. Uh, but then also save the date for Tuesday, August 29th from 3:15 to 4:15. Will be our open house to meet the teachers and the staff and kind of get a chance to look at the rooms. Um, and then the next day is actually the first day of school. So on Wednesday, um, the 30th, we have the first day back. So for just those who are watching may not be familiar, our arrival time is 7:50 in the morning, 7:50. And that'll be for kindergarten to grades four. But just a reminder for the kindergarten families, um, that we will have those three first days as half-days um, in order to get some meet and greets and it's kind of like the SCAMP camp that we had done in the past. So they get to chance to work with the teachers and then we fully assign the classrooms after that Friday before Labor Day. So they'll get a chance to meet both teachers again. They have met them at the open house. Um, and that we had a kindergarten meet and greet before, um, and then they're officially will be assigned then. And so just for everybody's reminders, so school is from 7:50 in the morning till 2:50 in the afternoon for grades one to four. But those first three days of school kindergarten will be picked up at 11:45. And also just to remind everybody that we have the kindergarten, uh, gets dropped off and picked up at the George Street entrance on the back of the school. First grade and second grade come in the main front doors. And then third and fourth grade are at the gym doorway to the left of the ramp of the side of the building. And so every grade level cluster has its own entrance and so it helps break it up. So there's not everybody trying to come in the main doors at the same time. So again, it's 7:50 to 2:50, with the exception of kindergarten, those first three days, which will be 11:45 dismissal on those three days. And then, um, again, we're excited to get back to school and get everybody back in the building. Custodians Ken and Sully and Noah from the middle school are really working hard to get the building going. Teachers have been in. We've been really working, uh, to get it looking spiff and span clean and shiny floors. And it's still a work in progress at this time, so please don't just stop by without checking in. There's hallways that are still blocked off because the floors are being waxed and dried and things. So, um, as I said, messages will be coming out soon about teachers and class lists and everybody's excited. Any questions or comments?
Uh, Carrie, thanks for the information. It's very useful. I was unaware of the carnival. And I was also unaware of the open house, so thank you.
Surely, everybody's welcome, so.
Yeah, I'm also very glad to hear that we have two classes for K in first grade. I know schools where there are 30 in one class for K, 30 in one class for first grade. And I think we're blessed with the resources to not have to go that route.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, have you ever been placed, speaking of the carnival, have you ever been placed in the dump pack?
I have, and I will say there's a possibility you might see me again this year. Just putting it out there, those that want to see me be dumped certainly can join us on that day, the 27th. So, and there may be others, local celebrities.
Very good. A dollar a throw?
Uh, it's a free throw, so you get a bonus there. You don't even have to do it.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
I, I know it was fun last year, so I'm sure that all of Central families will thoroughly enjoy that. Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else? Okay, um, and-
Saxons River, let me start with that. Laura, apologies for not being able to be here tonight. Um, her projected enrollment is, uh, a total of 73 students. It, it's pretty consistent, um, uh, from kindergarten to fourth, 16, 13, 12, 17, 15. So, um, one classroom each. Um, she currently has two open positions, school counselor and paraprofessional. So she's actively working to fill both of those positions. Um, and we're looking at strategies if we're unable to, uh, how, how we can assist her through the SU. She's unable to fill those positions, but, um, something she's been working at. Um, she, same as Carrie expressed, you know, a, a big thanks to Bert Lawrence and Sarah Lawrence for all the hard work over the summer. The, the place looks great right now, even, um, if you go in. Went up and visited her, gathered with her. Um, and then, um, what she talks about as far as supervision and evaluation and some of the things. So we basically have like, um, two tools that we, we're using. So we have a teacher effectiveness and supervision plan. That's something we pushed out through the SU last year. Um, and, um, as an administrative staff, we'll be working to tweak that a little bit. That's the formal observation plan, if you will. Um, in quotes, I, I use it, uh, meaning that it kind of maps out, um, year one, two, and three for teachers as they go through. Uh, but part of that also is, uh, we use a tool called Observe for Success, the number four. Um, it is a, it's an online platform that allows us to do classroom walkthroughs. So we're in the classroom, principals are in the classroom on a much more frequent basis. And then providing some quick feedback to, um, instructors, um, on, on specific things that we're looking through. And so, um, those two things will be tackling this week coming. Uh, as an administrative team, we're meeting, uh, Wednesday through Friday. Uh, and so that's one of our big agenda items is to kind of tackle that um, and have a plan, um, moving forward on how we're going to, uh, address that with teachers. Um, and then she has capital needs and, and planning, which I think we're going to talk about later. So. Any questions?
Any questions?
I can't answer any questions, but I'll definitely take them back.
Possibly Andy can answer.
Um, I have a question about the, the Observe for Success and the classroom walkthrough. So when you're saying they'll tackle like training people, is it the, it's not the first year and it's in news?
So no, this is our, really our third year, going into the third year of the news, but we have a lot of new admin.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, we were using it, um, last year to kind of try and capture everything. And it, it really isn't designed for, um, a long formal observation. It's really designed for a, you know, a five, 10-minute go in the classroom, specific look, look fours and to give that quick feedback to, um, teachers so that, you know, um, it's, is based on the, um, the work that, um, Kim Marshall did, uh, who was an administrator in, um, Massachusetts. I want to think he published his thing 20-plus years ago. But, uh, it's kind of based on the idea of if you're in a classroom on a much more frequent basis, you're seeing a lot more than the traditional formal observation, but according to that, so. But it's just the tool to capture all of that. Observe for Success is the tool, so.
Yeah. And then how frequently do the less formal walkthroughs happen? Is there a guidance? And then how frequently do the less formal walkthroughs happen? Is there guidance for it?
There is, it's in that teacher supervision and evaluation plan, which I can share with you all. Uh, we're going to tweak it again this week, but I can share it back out. Um, because it calls for a specific number. If you're a new teacher, you're going to get two formal observations and X number of minimum X number of walkthroughs. And then if you're uh, a more veteran teacher, you you might get less formals and more walkthroughs of that. So yeah, I'll share that out with you all. All right, under Mr. Bailey, um, who's taking a much needed vacation, so um, uh, but his number, so he has uh, he has forty fifth graders, fifty nine sixth graders, seventy to seventy five seventh graders, and sixty six eighth graders. That's seventh, that's seventh grade is that we we don't know where everyone's going just yet until uh, we actually get things um, settled. Um, so much of the summer has been spent um, finishing up student schedules for the upcoming school year. Um, when I was speaking with Mr. Bailey just last week, he said, you know, if we, he said, if we had to open up tomorrow, I've got schedules for every kid, which is amazing that everyone's scheduled uh, right now, so. Um, you know, they've been working on their handbook, the student handbook. Um, again, we'll do some of that work this week coming, uh, polishing that up so that'll be ready for families. Um, another saved the date, um, Monday, August twenty eighth, there is a back to school barbecue, um, and it will be at the middle school in the green space. Um, students, parents, community members are invited. Um, and it is um, it will be the 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 timing is uh, three thirty to five or three thirty to five thirty, so it looks like three thirty is the start date. There's not, not sure when the um, final time will be. Um, and then um, they have officially hired a PE and a health teacher. So that is good news. Uh, we continue to work on the um, uh, the math. Uh, as I said here, there was a math interview set up for today. Um, so I need to, I've been in a meeting all day, so I need to check in with this uh, administrative staff to see how that went. Um, and then um, we're setting up mentors and mentees for our new teachers and he wanted to give a big shout out again to the custodians for all the hard work. Um, they have been doing and continue to do. So Rick, your your crew has done an amazing uh, job, so uh,
They have.
We really appreciate it. So Art, uh, we have been working um, with um, Janelle, who was the teacher last year, uh, and the A O E, uh, we love to have her back. Um, there seems to be some traction that the A O E has made some changes maybe, um, and so we're pursuing that. It's always a struggle with the A O E because just like us, they go on vacation during the summertime and, you know, so you do a lot of tracking down, but Nicole has been um, diligently um, working on that with um, with her to uh, um, see if we can secure certification because we would love to have her back. If not, we've got some plans um, that we've been working out there, how we can maybe fill out positions, so.
That's good. At least we've got, looking at one of our positions, so what's looking good that maybe we can.
Yeah, I, Mr. Bailey and I um, really talked last week about some, you know, we've got, I will say, we're up to about the Plan E or F. Like, I like to have different plans, like if 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 one doesn't happen, then two and kind of things, so. Um, unfortunately, we're on Plan B already, but um, Plan A didn't pan out, um, but I think that um, you know, he he had a good plan. He really wanted to have um, some things secured before we were on uh, vacation, so. I'm I'm hopeful that um, when I connect with his team tomorrow, that we we might be asking for a special meeting, so.
You know, all of us are um, eager for me to be filled, so.
So I I I will tell you that any of our, any of our plans do not involve a remote teacher in any uh, respect. Um, we are one hundred percent committed to, pardon me, our um, our students will be uh, have a a a person who is qualified in mathematics in front of them, um, instructing them, so. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your diligence in doing that. Thanks. Okay, any other questions on on Karen? Um, I have one.
No, good. I I have one actually.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the, we, we talked about uh, a uh, uh, a summary of of evaluations by the principals, uh, and uh, obviously, this, this was the meeting that they were supposed to be here, I guess, but the plan is to have them here the first day. But uh, I I, if if you don't have it the next meeting, I'd like to have a date from uh, Andy that that basically says, when when are we gonna have it?
Exactly. That's a good, I think that's a good, good request.
Um, because I was not at the last meeting, uh, when you say a summary of teacher evaluations, could you just unpack that a little bit more for me? So I can help direct that while you're looking specifically for.
Well, the, you know, in 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 my, in my world, uh, the the most important job of this principal is to evaluate and mentor and bring along teachers so that they excel in the classroom. I mean, respecting the privacy issues, of course, doesn't allow disclosure of, you know, here was this person negative, but the assurance uh, or the discussion by each of the principals of the of the process they went through with each teacher or teachers that they didn't include in the process, for some reason, I don't know. Um, the uh, were there uh, 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 teachers put on on plans? And how how are, how are those going? Um, and um, just a a a general feel for uh, their opinions of the competency levels uh, of their staff.
Thank you, that's very helpful. I think um, I will reshare Laura's. I I summarized a lot of it. She, I think she touched on some of those things, so. Uh, as I read through it, I didn't, I didn't go into great detail, but I'll reshare hers and I think that might hit someone, but that's helpful for me. Thank you, so.
Cause she talked about, cause she talked about the the plan, the way they do it. But I think we wanted a little more specific, um, you know, there are
Yep.
You know, most of our teachers are at this level and, you know, like, how many are on co- cooperative plans? It is a good indication of where our teachers stand in the progress that they're making.
Sure.
Speaking of that, uh, Andy, I did, uh, Carrie, I I did get her report. It was sort of, there was a term that they used, they attached to it or they did something with it. Share it, share it. Uh, Laura made a comment in an email that said she's sharing her report. I didn't get to hers.
So a while back, we had created a document, there was a Rockingham Board Principals Report, and then there's links on each one of them. The challenge there is, it was shared with you back when we first created it. You have to go find it every single time, so that's clearly not going to be effective to to get it back up into your, because, because I went and searched for it, that's how I found her report, and Henry's, they're both linked in that report. So uh, I'll have to work with them to go up with a a better method to make sure it's.
Just somewhere we can, like, it gets right out to the top of your email.
Yeah, it should be fine if it's all, as long as we just get the same link every time, that could probably be easier.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I, I just.
But as long as it's in the agenda or in the email.
Yeah, we just got to clean that up a little.
Yeah.
So I, I, I do apologize for that.
You're right, the link will work i- if it comes up. But I, again, yeah, I did not see either of those either, so that was, that was a good explanation. Thank you. Okay, um, any other questions, anything else on the evaluations, because it was listed on our us reports on evaluations? Okay. Uh, the superintendent update, um, and we put on there just an update maybe on the strategic planning that's going on. It's kind of a draft at this point, you need to explain, but if you can do that in the PCB update that we've kind of talked a little bit about.
Sure, so we've been working on a uh, an overarching strategic plan that kind of ties in not only the um, the vision and goals that we have published out, um, but also our continuous improvement plan and the work that each building is doing with their instructional leadership teams. So I wanted to get a a five to seven year plan um, that covers many of those pieces. Um, we'll be working administratively this week, um, looking at that, um, and getting some feedback. We will then be um, putting that out to our stakeholders, looking for some more feedback to maybe tweak some of our language or or some of our direction. Um, and the hope is that by early, early summer or early fall, pardon me, as we get back, that we'll have a document that will be a public facing document for uh, anyone to to view to see, you know, what what direction are we going as a, as an S U? Um, but it will incorporate the work that each building is doing. So more to come on that piece. Um, PCBs updates, uh, uh, first, let me just, uh, again, I I sent out a thing, but I'll just, so everyone knows, I apologize that I didn't inform uh, the board back when I um, uh, worked uh, to set us up with the class action lawsuit against uh, Monsanto. Uh, it was an oversight of my part just to include it in one of my um, uh, reports. Um, the class action lawsuit is, it's a no cost lawsuit. Um, and it um, protects you from the potential of future harms. Uh, we know that all of our, the majority of our buildings, other than Grafton, was built during the time that these chemicals were used and many of the products for these schools. Um, and it potentially could be um, that would, we have to do some remodel or we, or laws change and we have to remove mastic in the corner that is on the thing. There might be PCBs in there and they might have to be mitigated if we remove them, and so the dollars that could come from this could help to cover those things, so. Um, it was really trying to think of not current problems that we know of, but unknown future problems, some sometime in the future, uh, so that we're not depleting our capital reserves, uh, just to do that, so. Um, but um, as Rick kind of pointed out at the beginning, when we're trying to correct the minutes, um, the buildings within Rockingham School District have not been tested yet. They are scheduled to be tested, um, but um, you know, uh, that testing hasn't happened. It does take some time once the testing has happened to then get the results back, um, so it could be um, a few months, once each building is tested. Off the top of my head, I just don't know the testing schedule. Uh, there was a loose one early on, so.
Uh, yeah, well, it's my understanding that the way this works is they come in, they do their walkthrough, and then they devise a, and write a, and submit a sampling plan to the state, which has to be approved by the state. That's when they come back and do the act.
Right, and and and, and to further that, is so they do a walkthrough and they kind of think, oh yeah, we'll place here, we'll place here, that they're sample, they're testers, um. And then, once they do that testing and they get those results, if anything comes back quote unquote hot, meaning that there's a high level of PCBs in the air, then they have to determine where they might be coming from. And then they do more targeted testing in those areas to see if the levels are at whatever the the state has set for inappropriate uh, levels. And once that has been determined, so if it's determined that it is in the purple paint on the columns here, I'm just looking up, then we would devise a plan for mitigating the purple paint on the columns. And so um, and it it has been somewhat of a moving target uh, from the state, uh, as far as where they were with Burlington High School shutting the entire building down to where the the way they are talking today and the recommendations they are giving, if they were to apply those standards to Burlington today, Burlington might have had to shut a couple classrooms down. And that's all. So, so that's where the swing has gone, um, and I legislatively, um, I cannot recall off the head where they left it at the end of the their session, uh, but there has been some talk on the Hill, uh, or up on pillar of how they're going to address that and um, and I don't know if they're going to say stop, I don't know if they're going to change the numbers, I, you know, that we don't know, so.
As we filing the lawsuits, been captured in any way the PCB testing dates?
I do not, not to my knowledge.
I just checked in something today, there was some communication that my service kind of in the neck of my mind.
I I had a conversation with our attorney today who said that one of the things that they had to do is just to um, the company wants to be present um, or have a representative during their scheduling, um, but he did not indicate um, that that was delaying in any way. It's just been um, some scheduling pieces there. And I think that's the company's way of protecting themselves to say, we're not or not us exactly, but anyone who's getting tested is not bugging the samples.
Any, any other questions?
Well, I think the obvious, the obvious question, uh, I don't really, this question is that the, um, you know, it's sort of like the alarm went out with this Burlington High School closing. And uh, and then it goes into this somewhat your product and state resource harass. Um, and uh, we're here now, two years into this and you know, we don't know when the testing are, you know, we as board members and certainly parents uh, want to have this cold recovery that uh, that the kids are safe, coming to school, and I think that the uh, uh, not to rush the process, but you know, the to the extent that, that there could be some feedback from the authorities, uh, you or the state or whatever, that uh, rest, that 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 might away concerns, I think could be very helpful. And uh, you know, we, I feel, as a board member, I feel, given the given the timing of the buildings of our three schools and the renovations, I feel very good that that our kids are safe. Now, does that mean that a caulking somewhere on some window, you know, might uh, need to be changed or something like that? Uh, but uh, you know, I really think, I I think as a board member, that we're in good shape. Rockingham is in good shape uh, for our case, our pre-cation to to late. And uh, I hope, uh, I hope parents share that view, but uh, anyway.
And well, I I had shared a a a slideshow mid-year last year, maybe Marchish, but I I honestly can't remember when I, um, the date, but I can reshare it. They kind of do some of the walkthrough that you're talking about, like where, because what it was was when this PCBs is an issue nationally. It's not just a Vermont issue, it's a, it's a national issue. Um, and, but Vermont adopted some very strict standards. Um, and I don't want to quote the numbers, but but very, very um, low levels of detection, whereas um, the 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 federal government is, you know, CDC, the EPA, their numbers were much higher and um, and and so that was when Burlington had been tested and that's why that had happened. And as Vermont has adjusted their numbers to kind of coincide with the science and the understanding, that's why you've seen this relaxation, uh, you know, or easing of of the numbers. Um, it's still a concern. It's still something we want to be very much uh, aware of and, you know, just like asbestos. Like, we know, we have a whole plan that if there is asbestos detected, how we're going to mitigate it and whatnot, but if it's holding steady, it's it's usually pretty good, you know, it's when it's airborne, it's when it's the issue. Um, so yeah, I I feel, as you say, very comfortable because I think the work that Rockingham has done, um, because a lot of that testing has to be done when you go through those renovations. because a lot of that testing has to be done when you go through those renovations, that a lot of that is potentially already been mitigated to some level, but like 100% certain, no. So, but as soon as we are getting numbers, we're publishing them. Within our SU Westminster School, for some reason, it been dubbed that that was the school they went into first. And when we got their results back, they were negative for any indication of PCBs. So, you know, I, I think that we also moved the high school up because it had been originally scheduled out for 2025. So we moved it up because we wanted to make sure that, you know, because we got.
Exposure, exposure is tested to hours and hours and hours too.
Hours and years. It, it's something like forty years in the same building for ten hours a day. In the same, not even the building, the, the actual classroom or something like that. It's, it, it is a, again, I might be exaggerating my numbers a little bit, so. That's my understanding, it, it is a long-term exposure.
I wanted to ask you about the strategic plan. I'm really excited about that, about hearing more about it, but I was curious about the, the stakeholders we'll send it out to and how you'll get feedback and share that feedback back with folks.
Yeah, so we're going to use Thought Exchange as one of our initial pushouts. That's our online platform that allows us to kind of do cloud sourcing and, and kind of do cloud feedback groups, focus groups, because they can answer that and those things and do that. We are also this year going to be setting up at the SU level three kind of advisory groups. One is going to be a, a teacher advisory group, another one's going to be a student advisory group, and the other one's going to be a parent community advisory group. And so we'll have more information out on that coming soon. But we'll utilize, you know, that, I'll, I'll say more traditional method of trying to bring people in and get them. We'll have copies of our strategic plan available for people to, you know, go on the website, look at, and then provide us also that feedback, you know, through polling or whatnot. So totally utilize a lot of the open house plan. Because that seems to be a time when you're capturing, you know, parents are in the building and have some devices available for them to look at and get that feedback.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one. It, it hit the papers today about the bus lease. I've, I've actually had a couple of calls of confusion, whatever, I didn't think it was a bad article, but. Anyway, the, one of the implications of, of the bus studies that were going on this summer and led to the lease of these seven new buses was the, was the utilization that had been going on in recent years, including this past year, of the buses. And one of the charges that the, that came out of the SU decision was to task Andy with the, with the charge to make it clear to the building principals just what services our buses, our busing will provide and what services we don't provide. Because the, again, the total utilization and really the, the, the issue isn't the bus routes, it isn't bringing the kids to and from school. It's all the other stuff. And, you know, in order to be anywhere near cost effective with this very expensive service, we have to, these, these rules or what we will do and what we won't do really need to be communicated, and they need to be communicated in the next few weeks because school is starting. So I hope, again, in the, probably not at this board, but maybe at the SU board, we will hear just what those guidelines are going to be for bus utilization. Because I think as far as the board is concerned, we've bought buses that, we've leased buses that, that have a a yearly limit of sixteen thousand, I guess now. It was originally fifteen thousand. And we certainly do not expect utilization to exceed that number in any year going forward. So it does, it does present a challenge, but I think one is fairly easy to implement.
Yeah, well, well said.
So no question, this comment, okay? Anything else on strategic planning or PCB testing? Okay, not seeing anything unfinished, old business. We have a tuition policy and that's sent out to each and every identity. Okay, copy of that too.
Are you looking for feedback on, on that document?
Chris, any discussion, anything we get so that we can post it hopefully after tonight?
I thought it was well done. My only question is, has the attorney had a look at it?
We will want to confirm that it's okay, it is, a lot of it is, is based, it's either based on, you know, the information from Westminster they did in theirs that we wanted to keep in ours, and also direct quotes from the statute. So it's, it's pretty, pretty precise and, and pretty well right, right there.
Yes, so my suggestion would be that you run it by the attorney and then if there are no issues on that front, go ahead and post it.
I agree. I agree, yeah.
All right, so we've, is, is the board in agreement on that? I know Caitlin, you wanted real specifics, are you comfortable with these?
Yeah, I think this is also maybe part of what we discussed with like the difference between policy and procedure and being a little bit newer in the the implementation of this. I wanted to make sure, because the Westminster policy was so specific about what needed to happen with a letter going to the board to confirm here what the needs are, we agree that we will pay it. And here, we don't have enough policy with the processes. And I, I just want to make sure that somewhere it is clear what the policy or the procedure is for confirming that. So there's documentation that we have for all of these steps. And there's no question about the agreement or the school's assertion that they're able to meet any of the needs. So that was one question that I had is if the procedure can lay out those steps. And so where, like if I, if I were a parent looking at this, I wouldn't necessarily know who that procedure was or what the steps are. So thinking about where that lives and how to contact.
I think there's a, and, and Andy, if you want to speak to it, that's okay. But I was going to say that there is a, that this also covers our Graft Athens kids and our Westminster kids. And there is a procedure well laid out for them to, if they have on it. I would also, our special ed department has also been working with those students so they would know their special needs. Where it would come into play is with someone coming in new to the district. And special ed has, has the requirements that if they're coming in on IP, the IP has to be furnished to the special ed department and they would review that anyway. So the special needs are covered, we covered that way. And we would be able to ask at our meeting whether all those were covered and administration would be able to let us know that we were able to do that.
So I, I apologize, I don't have the actual tuition policy in front of me. But, thank you. We cannot deny.
No, we're not denying.
But I'm just saying that if a student, any student moves into our district, we cannot, like, if they have an IP or, or whatever their needs are, if they are resident of our, our district, we have to accept them. I understand that. And if, if you were to look at any non-resident, you could not use that as any criteria in any way. You cannot deny someone access. If you're going to take, you take a student, you do not take a student based on their needs and what their level of needs are. So if you accept, if, if you, because I did have partial of this, that Westminster's vetted with our attorney. So that is it, it's a huge thing. You can't discriminate because a student's going to cost you more money, but you're not going to take that student into your district.
Like there says, we are just making sure that we are able to cover them without any additional interventions and supports, without any additional resource of a student needs.
You cannot, that's what I'm saying, you cannot.
That's what, that's what there says. Any more detail than what our says?
Priscilla? So, that one section is the one, which is the section A under criteria for admission. Is actually the one I would want an attorney to read over, to make sure we're
We'll do that, Chris, and make sure that that's okay, and if not, we'll adjust it and then post it. If that's okay.
I think that other thing I wanted to just clarify is for the, the roles that it's, the board accepts the recommendation of the administration of the school, like the, in consultation piece, just so like if we are applying this policy, if somebody applies to coming from another district and this school says that they are equipped to meet the needs, then our role as the board is just to say, yes, we accept that. We don't make any other qualitative assessment about the students fit.
Absolutely, that's not for us to.
We just accept the administration.
Right, because we, we have to, like Andy was saying, and it says under the criteria, we are admitting and we are not denied admission for any of those protected categories that are there, by federal or state laws. So we've covered all, all of those.
Yeah, but you have to imagine the circumstances that that they haven't already faced. But clearly, the, the idea here is not to, not to exclude kids, it's to basically make sure the recharge tuition. It's that simple. The, and, and of course, if some kids have special needs, that has to be, this school has to get prepared for that. So it's just confirmation.
All right, so we will do, we'll run that by there and is everybody okay with it as long as? And then I'll get it posted after, after I do that, I'll take care of that. Okay. So we did it by consensus and all agreed, so. We have the audit two thousand and twenty-two on here again. The only thing that we didn't ask was, Jips had asked about the management letter. And that's why I quickly asked Jim, and Jim will send that out tomorrow, he said, so we will have that. I think that covered that. Anything under five-year capital improvement plan and maintenance? We had one sent out to us last time. Are then, are there any adjustments to that, anything that updated then?
No, I have, I do not have any more updates as far as costs go. I did have, I will mention that the, what I had on that Y twenty-five for the exterior painting of Central Elementary. I did get a proposal on that back in twenty seventeen for twenty-two grand, which based upon what the engineers recommend, about three percent each year, that would bring that cost up at Y twenty-five to right around twenty-eight grand. The exterior painting of Central Elementary. Other than that, I have no other updates for costs.
Is there anything scheduled in any of our three schools?
Well, the actual projects that are going on, you know, right now.
The security and the.
Right, the security and the, well, that leads into the next.
Okay, so there's nothing new on, on that at this point. Okay, we'll cover, we'll cover that. Jip's question and the next one under Gasser project, if that's all that's been scheduled. Be, unless, there is one other thing that we had talked about scheduling that was the steps to the middle school here. Where are we on that?
I, I was not aware of that. At the special place.
We've talked about, we've talked about that because that's a big need and that.
Yeah, we have no cost on that, that would be a cap project. I, I can ask Mr. Horton to take a look at them. And just because he's, he's got, we've got a, if we've got a company that's out and it's like a small job that they can do, or if it's a side job of someone else, he'll tell it very quickly if it's something they can include and some of the projects we're already doing. Like, when we do the security entrance at Sexton's River, we're going to have to do some, a little bit of maintenance work on the, the old front steps, but that'll become the new main entrance. So it's not that they're in horrible shape or crumbling or anything of that nature, they're a little potted. And, you know, it's, it's poured concrete from gosh knows when. And so there's a product you can put on it that will seal it up and, you know. So we're going to take the time and, but we're also going to explore, is it, is it more cost effective also just to, to yank those out and put in some fresh steps that are going to be decoded and stuff like that? So, so Mr. Horton's on, was on some time off, but we're supposed to connect and, and go out and look at a couple of schools, but I can definitely also look at these and probably get a cost here.
Yeah, well, we have some concrete work that needs to be done by the entryway at Central as well, which I'm in the process of contacting some contractors for that. There's also some sidewalk works, I've been in contact with the highway departments to how far down because that front step area is ours to take care of. But further down the sidewalk, I mean.
Right, you've got that, yeah, the sidewalk, cities, but.
Exactly.
And, and if you don't fix both, then it's just going to, your fix could just get
Exactly.
undermined by.
Yeah, and they are in the process. Yeah, we're doing the roads and.
The coping around the roof here or whatever, that's another masonry related issue.
Exactly.
On all of these things, like the steps and stuff that were on Steve's list, are they not on his list?
I do not believe those steps are on his list. I, I had spoken to him about it, but as far as he, where he is right now, has been focusing really on the Esser projects. But that's why as he's, as that's becoming more construction management company and keep, and then I can pull him out and have him start looking at some of these other projects for us, so.
Yeah, because I think we'd like to to move forward on some of these things.
So we'll get some costs and we can come back and let you know and.
But it makes sense, since we've got him, it makes sense to put all masonry type things, whether it's in Westminster or the high school anyplace else, all in the same pot, get them done.
Chris?
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to kind of remind folks, yes, you know, we have to comply with the bidding requirements, but we can go ahead and make these repairs and, you know, for now, charge them to the maintenance budget. But we have until June next year to assign money from our capital funds, you know, and take it out of the budget. So these things can move forward. And, and we have quite a bit of capital repair money to spend on them. So I would agree, let's go ahead and get done what we can get done.
Okay, so it sounds like they should go forward to consensus that.
We'll, we'll, we'll work with, Rick and I and Steve will work together. And, and if it, if it's like working with Steve, it's going to feel like it's going to take a little bit more time, then I think we'll just try and do something like we've always done. And, but then we'll come back with these are the costs and let you all know because, you know, that way we just get the whatever we're spending, you, you know, so Jim can delete.
Thank you. And so the next thing is Esser projects, expenditures to date and upcoming?
So we, I, on, was it last Wednesday passed out or before that? Just what we've allocated, but also some of those were things that were spent. Um Shirley Lynch, who's our grant uh manager at the business office, she uh has been on vacation um and today she went to a training, um so I haven't had a chance to talk with her. Uh, I have let her know that I need uh the expenditure versus uh or actuals versus expenditures as soon as possible, so she is aware of it and uh hoping to get that for you all very shortly. Um, and students I have that will put that out separate from my normal report on a monthly basis so that it's out sooner. Um, but as far as uh projects within Rockingham, uh the roof here, uh especially over the auditorium um is uh on the list, and I believe um Steve is, is finalizing things to move forward with that bidding process. Um, the kitchen project.
Yes, I'm sorry, the bidding, the bidding process is, is done. The, the contractor's just waiting on the permit and the materials.
Okay, well, and before we can do that though, we've got to collect all that and send that up to the state and get approval, so.
Well, that's, that's.
Well, yeah, put the actual fund. For each individual project, so um.
May I ask who won the Ruben bid?
So he knew, I, because I was off, so I don't know.
R H Ruby.
Where are they? I look, East, I believe it's East Hampton, yes?
East Hampton, yes, okay. They've done, they did the nineteen fifty-five section here, several years back, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Very good company.
Um, so um there's also supposed to be uh the roof at Central. Did they, was that part of it or is that a separate bid?
That's, that will be separate, that.
Um.
And the most needy section of roof was the auditorium over at Middle School, so that's what Steve handled first. Good.
Um, the uh work on the kitchen at Central Elementary, uh we're looking at proposed um date of like a, a mid-fall, uh Octoberish, uh maybe November later. Um, just finalizing those plans. Um, some of it's the bidding piece, uh but as soon as we get that get approval from the state, we'll um move forward with uh that project. Um, Steve, there, there's a whole plan for how they'll section off a small part of the gym day. They do vacuum so that all the air goes out, it doesn't go anywhere into the building type of thing. Um that, that work will get done. Uh, and then the work at Sexton's River, uh they were finalizing some things with the architect as far as um what kind of um material will be used for symmetry and stuff like that. So we're at that point of that stage, but there's some bidding that needs to come back um and get that played out, so. But those are the um, the, those big plans. Um, the um, the work that Ricky Adams was doing as far as security upgrades. Um, so wiring was uh redone in all of the buildings. Uh, there was network updates in, uh I believe all of the buildings. Uh, Central was probably the bigger um rat's nest, so to speak, uh just because it was an older closet that needed to be upgraded. Um, here at the middle school, they've installed already um and at Central, the new entrance uh piece, so as you come in, I don't know if it's online just yet. Um, but as far as there will be a, a keyless swipe, so staff members will be able to swipe and come in. Um, but there's new cameras um that um Ricky was showing me, um the people who have access will be able to even pull up with their cell phone and look at, look at cameras type of thing. So if an alarm goes off, technically speaking, Rick can pull up his, the, the, the app and can look at cameras and kind of see where there might be a problem. Uh, but it's upgrading the outdoor cameras, but also the cameras in our hallways, uh so you have better coverage um in, in all of the, but that's not just here, but it's in all the buildings, so uh they'll be upgrading there. Um, trying to think of what else. What's probably the biggest project that we don't want, you know? Uh, and some updates with fire alarm systems and just the, the memory boards and, and stuff of that nature, so.
Any questions? Thank you, Andy. Sure, thank all that information. It helps us a lot. Uh, new business for discussion, review and approve policy B twenty-one. Um, professional development.
Probably.
Okay, this was posted July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And are there any questions on the policy? Pretty straightforward. It's, it's just a slight update from my asked one and if you can with what being on the S D A suggested.
I've lost you folks there. I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's my fault. I was thinking that there was another sentence on that, but I may, it may not really it may have been at the start that there were two sentences, but I'll, I'll double check that to make sure there wasn't another sentence, and if there was, I'll put, um, I'll look at the posting again. All right, so um you made a motion to approve it, so um any, any follow-up, any questions? Okay, um so let's vote. Chris?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
You want, yeah. Okay, I'll start with that. Okay, um, we have a tuition request. No, did you, did you have that back? Also, Andy.
I, I was not aware of that, so I apologize.
Let me see if I can bring it up.
Thank you. Well.
Pardon?
I was saying thank you to Rick, that's all.
Yes, thank you, Rick.
You are welcome. Good night, night.
You too. See you travel.
Thank you.
Where is he going?
Oh, oh. He's been, he's been, he's been going, I think, since six AM, so I got it.
Okay, here it is. Yeah, Andy, I think you're a little bit sensitive. Uh, I think we did. Uh, you said, it, it's, it's from one back though. It was six twenty-nine, twenty-three, and that he sent it on to uh Nicole and and from Cheryl. I know. It reads, and it's signed by Cheryl Charles. The Westminster School voted out during winter approved the request of parent principal Liz Hardy to allow her daughter Marlo Hardy to attend the Westminster Center School during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The vote was consistent with the board's policy concerning such request attached to the request from Principal Hardy in the school district's whole policy. The Westminster School Board is expecting requests that Rockingham pay tuition for Marlo to attend the Westminster School in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. As additional background, the Westminster School Board began development of their policy in June of twenty twenty-two and worked out on several months and reviewed and supported for legal counsel in the process. So the request from Liz says, dear members of the Westminster School Board, I'm writing to request that my daughter Marlo Harlow remain at WCS for sixth grade. Marlo began at the center school as a three-year-old in Miss Lisa's preschool class and will be entering sixth grade in the fall. Marlo was test first at WCS with various opportunities to create, make, explore and connect with students and staff that I feel like being great special here in Westminster. Thank you, Liz Hardy. Okay, um, I believe that what happened, they moved to Rockingham. And so if the state were to come here, she was simply becoming one year earlier, she would be coming in sixth grade with students that other students that she has known previously, but not in the same grade. So um they are requesting tuition or from Rockingham to Westminster.
I'm, I would say. Yes, I would say, I'm asking, hey, the tuition.
Okay, so.
I think Westminster, I think if they want to let the child continue to attend the school, then let the child attend the school.
Okay, so should, Jips just say that um motion to not pay tuition for this child to attend Westminster?
I agree with Jim.
So do we have any other discussion or just clarifying the policy, because of their policy, tuition is not required, that the sending district for the child through them? And it's not required for this particular child?
No, it is not required for any child. They, they, they will request tuition, but it's not, it's not a requirement for them.
It, it is up to us to decide whether we'll.
No, no, what, what, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is, their admissions of that child is not, the tuition being paid is not a requirement. They will request the district that is sending to them for admission after the fact, but if they admit a child and the sending district chooses not to pay or refuses not to pay, they're not going, they will still allow that child to attend their bill.
Hmm. It's up to, sorry, it's their decision. It's their decision, but it's up to us to decide.
That's what I'm trying to say. For them to admit a child, tuition is not the criteria for if they'll admit the child or not. So if they've decided to admit the child, because they've already agreed to admit this child, if Rockingham chooses to not pay tuition, which is within your rights, they are not going to deny that child access to the building. They will allow that child to still attend. That's what I'm saying.
Understood. Yep.
Okay, so do we need any other discussion or are we ready to vote? Okay, the motion is to not pay the tuition for um the request to, for tuition to Westminster for the twenty-three, two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. How do you vote, Chris?
I, I am in, I'm in favor of that motion, yeah.
If you know yes, you're not paying the tuition. If you pay, vote no, you're voting to pay.
Yep.
So which way do you vote, Chris?
I, I vote yes, not to pay the tuition.
Okay, uh Bill?
Yes.
Hey, one, yes, Andrew.
Good.
Uh, yes, okay, so um we just voted to not pay tuition for that child to attend Westminster.
Can I um come back a little bit here and going back to our previous discussion on remember I kind of quizzed Jim Vanzina about who gets to count kids? Um, that kiddo's our kid.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
A, ADM stays with Rockingham, yes.
Yes.
That kid is our kid.
Yes.
Yes. Um, the other thing on tuition that, that is something for the board to think about um with the number of students that we do um tuition in from Graff Athens and from Westminster is whether we want to consider, and it's not something that we think, I'm really thinking about considering tonight, I'm just bringing it up so that the board can think about it for future um meetings. Jim was suggesting that possibly we might want to consider a um discount of percentage off if all students in a particular grade attended of, of Rockingham schools. It might be incentive enough for the towns to, for the law for their students to attend. That would give us control over the curriculum and everything that that child, those children are learning because they are in the future part of our Union High School. And that would be the high school that they would be attending unless they did school choice because they are our children, are our children. So it's just something to think about for future possibilities. Chris?
Yeah, and my immediate reaction is, yes, that would be nice, but my experience is that parents make very personal decisions about their children and, and where they're gonna send them and might not be particularly swayed by um the fact that their school district is gonna save a few bucks. Um, so that'd be what I, just to think about that too, you, you know. Parents make decisions based on all kinds of things, like where they go to work and, you know, where the siblings went and whether they like somebody or they don't, something in the worst cases, but um anyway, there are a lot of factors.
Right.
I think the, I don't, the, the, the other factor is that uh, you know, we're not, we're, we're basically taking our, the people cost and, and uh using that as a, as the rate of uh tuition. I mean, it's not like we're building a, a profit margin in uh so that uh, you know, the idea is they're repaying that for, for our own kids and, and we would expect the uh people in the other towns to, to pay the same price and, and that's, you know, I think that's the equitable thing to do. And, and I agree with Chris, it's, uh, school choice is a very interesting thing, particularly how it's employed in the, in the three towns that we're from here.
And, and we might never have that scenario where we had all of them from a grade anyway. That's my thought, so. And I, I, my first reaction when he suggested was that, well, if we have students coming from other schools, say from, maybe from Putney, Goodwater, sort, um, another school outside the district, then you, you have to be equitable in offering it, but we would never probably ever have all of those students coming anyways, so it wouldn't matter. You know, kind of thing. It was just something that he brought up and I thought I'd share with you to think about. Okay, appointments and resignations, do we, we don't have any, okay, um. I don't think there's any, gonna be any need for an executive session either. So we're at director's comments. I'll start with you, Chris.
Sure, um, here's just a little um preview of, of budgeting season coming up. I spoke with Jim Vin, Jim Vanzina today about where things are at at the business office. Um, you know, when it was gonna be practical to start to look at budgets, so uh they have auditors coming next week. Uh, they're still really fully into the uh transition to the Infinite Visions uh accounting system. And one of the uh most important things is, is getting payroll into the system, and we're also coming up on what is the largest transitional payroll of the year, which is the one that comes just as teachers and paraprofessionals come back at the beginning of September, so it's a, that's a pretty uh intensely busy time for the uh central office and payroll, and, and for the administrators too, because a lot of paperwork to be shuffled around, so the option of this is once that, those salaries are in the Infinite Visions uh system, the main ones for everybody, then it allows uh Jim to generate budgets based on, you know, the people we already employ uh this year, which, so that's the salary spreadsheets that, you know, we, we look at. That's where it comes from. It comes from payroll. Of course, payroll then has to be updated to account for like to bargain agreements and, and for next year. So um bottom line, I think we're looking at mid-September, late September, early October for really them having all that in place and uh and ready, you know, for us to have a look at as board members. That doesn't mean that principals can't and Andy and principals can't, you know, start on other parts of their budgets and start thinking about that, and they need to think about their personnel for next year, even though that is a crazy impossible task at this point, but that's the way school budgeting works. So I just wanted to give everybody kind of a little update on that, and we probably won't have a finance. We probably won't have a finance committee meeting until September and, and at, or late September, and hopefully that will be kind of the first look at the W N E S U budget. But it's really gonna be, everybody's budgets are gonna start to be presentable at that point. That's it. Just wanted to fill you in.
Thank you. Bill?
Uh, yes, thanks for filling, this is a bit of an unorthodox request, but there's a family on my block with two boys that go to this school. And about two and a half months ago, they lost their apartment. Since then, they've been living at the motel roadway inn. The husband works, I believe the wife also has a part-time job. They're not deadbeats, as we've had experience with getting new staff a place to live. It's really tough in this area to find available apartments. I'm just mentioning this in case you come across somebody who has or knows of a two-bedroom apartment that's available. It's father, mother, there's a two-year-old and then the two boys that attend school here, here where we are. They can afford a rent up to about fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars per month. So if you know of somebody or have a lead, please let me know and I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Because I don't know how much longer they can continue to stay at this motel. Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm, thank you to Andy for talking about the strategic plan. It's something I'm really interested in seeing developed, and I think it's a, a board, it's really helpful to have that kind of a document to guide our decisions and think about how we're working with the best interest of the priorities and the vision for the district. So I'm excited to hear more about that, particularly as we look at some of the assessment data and think about what that tells us about where those priorities are. So yeah, just thank you for sharing, and I'm excited to continue to talk about it.
Thanks.
We're, we're, we still haven't seen test scores. I know, I know summer is nice for making patients, but maybe that, you know, soon we're gonna be in. It's also a time, I think, to, to deal with things like, you know, teacher evaluations, test scores and things like that. Because then, then everybody, you know, wants to get into the process of teaching our kids, which is what we want them to do. So, you know, again, I don't know why that didn't make it onto the agenda. It missed, it, it was on last, the last agenda, it missed, and missed again. So I guess we got one more meeting there.
You don't, you're gonna wait, answer that, but she was out, and that's why, because I keep asking for it. And it's listed on the agenda item as assessment data. For my comments, the other thing that, and I, forgive me, I skipped the Zoom that we get put on as B for new business. Basically, I think the, the discussion would have been that we need, Bill brought up that AI is going to say that they can use all of our Zoom data, our facial recognition, our data and all of that stuff. There are changes coming to the Zoom systems, start on August twenty-third, he told me. And so I think at this point, what I would like is for Ricky and the administration to look into to see whether there's any impact on us with those new changes and what is going on because I don't know enough about it to be able to comment or, or anything else. I will, I will let you comment again if you want to, Bill.
It's just that this seems to be a privacy policy change with Zoom and that they are notifying people, and again, this needs to be checked out by Ricky because, I don't know, this was passed to me by someone who I know and who's reliable. They sent me excerpts of these changes, and basically it says that through AI, they will be able to track our data, our facial recognition, our personal information, and who knows where that would be sent along to. So it's a privacy issue that we need to just double check on to make sure that anybody who participates in Zoom still has basic privacy protections.
So I'll leave that up to the administration and Richard. And I will comment that, yes, we're headed into getting closer and closer to school, and everybody is going to be gearing up for school to start very shortly soon. Continue your patience, continue your caring for any individuals in, in the community and your other staff that's coming back on board and that kind of stuff. Agenda items for next meeting, we do have assessment data on there and, and I adjusted and evaluations because they did not, did not cover that tonight. And a discussion of the twenty twenty-three deficit, the issue surplus, if we need any more on that. Is there anything else that people want on there for agenda items at this point? Or if you think about things in the meantime, that's fine. Our next meeting is actually an all-board meeting on August sixteenth. So I do know this board is feeling about the quality of money, that's a Wednesday. And then.
I think, oh, this is for Rockingham, that will come up at the all-board meeting.
Yeah, right, all-board, those go for hours, but we want to schedule that in August or whether we want to read till the first weekend of September.
I think it's just some of these reports, we ought to get it.
So true, but I'm not.
Just, you know, pushing the ball, pushing that ball downward.
Yeah.
It doesn't make many sense.
Okay, so August sixteenth is a all-board meeting, and our next meeting today is, what, seven? Would be the twenty-first of August. And hopefully we can have our reports at that time. Is there anything, and if there's anything else that any of the board members want, want on there, we can, please send it to me for consideration so that, so that I can see about getting it on there. Okay? If there's nothing else, I would go by consensus and adjourn the meeting. Okay, I'm seeing, oh, yes, positive, so the meeting is adjourned at seven oh eight.